All right, 7 o'clock. I'm going to call them into order. Rule call. Jessica?
Here.
Rod?
Here.
Leah?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Ethan?
Here.
Carly?
Here.
Adam?
Here finally.
Thank you for joining us. And I'm also here, meeting as been properly noticed.
Yes.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
There we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think I can sit next to Rod for this. Rod, why don't you read the mission statement for us?
Oh, I'd love to.
Great.
Two weeks in a row. The Mount Horbury School District in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you. Moving on to two, to a approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Leah. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. To be approval of the January 3rd Board Regular and Executive Meeting Minutes.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Leah. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to two C, approval of the January 4th Joint Board of Education and Village Board Meeting Special Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Rod. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to three. Three A is school news. Ethan, would you like to get us started on that?
Of course. So I have a couple things. Our music department has its Taste of Jazz coming up Saturday the 28th at 6:30. And tickets go on sale this Wednesday, and they have suggested $5 donation with those. Then we have boys varsity and junior varsity basketball is on this Tuesday versus Dodgeville. The boys JV and varsity, the girls JV and varsity basketball teams are playing on Thursday versus Sauk Prairie. And the boys JV and varsity wrestling teams are playing on Friday the 20th at Monroe.
Thank you. Very well done.
Great.
Dr. Slarno, do you have anything to add?
Not anything to add, but just a note of gratitude to Ethan. You know, today is a day off for our students. And in the spirit of Dr. King's request that we do service on our day off to celebrate, I hear you are giving of your time and your talents, so thank you so much for that.
Well said. All right, moving on to, sorry, board members, any school news? Leah?
February 7th is Culver's Day, PTO's Culver's Day. So either Culvers on February 7th. All day, multiple times.
Good to know. Thank you.
You'll gain 20 pounds.
It's fine.
That's okay.
It's for a good cause.
Your health is not a good cause.
Dave's health.
Thanks, lady.
Moving on to three B, citizens comments.
I didn't see anyone.
Yeah, I didn't check this evening.
No?
All right, moving on to four, personal transactions. There is an addendum, and I wasn't sure if you had any remarks you'd like to share.
Is that okay? Because, boy, we've got four fantastic professionals who are preparing to exit into retirement. And I thought maybe it'd just be a moment just to highlight them and their service to our community. First, I'd like to extend a note of gratitude to Teresa Berry. Teresa has been a social studies teacher with our school district since the 2001, 2002 school year, 22 years. Her service to our community is not only within the classroom, but outside the classroom as well. She has served as our assistant track coach at the high school. And Sarah Straka actually went into a classroom and did a visit at one point, and she wrote, "The depth of knowledge and the topic connections that Teresa's able to present and that the students are able to make are impressive." Do you remember writing that, Sarah? Probably.
Five years ago.
Yeah. So we certainly want to extend congratulations to Teresa. Patty Fitch is also preparing to retire. She joined us as a fourth grade teacher back in 1990. That was when the first George Bush was president, if I remember right. So I mean, we've talked about giving of her entire career to us, 33 years with us. Teacher and student relationships are one of Mrs. Fitch's greatest strengths. She's warm, she has a caring affect, and student rapport provides a really comfortable and psychologically safe environment for her student goes one of her evaluations. And I also want to note Barb Hushison. Barb has also served this district for a number of years, a little bit less than Patty, but 29 years. She came to us from the University of Illinois. She received her master's degree in 1997. She actually began with us as a long-term substitute teacher, and that's always exciting for me to see, someone who starts out as a substitute eventually finds their way into the system because they enjoy the system, and then they stay as long as they do. Barb had been a fifth grade teacher. One of her evaluations says that she's the type of person always goes above and beyond for the extra mile for her students. She is an upbeat, dynamic personality who invariably wears a smile and looks at the potential in every child on the positive side of every issue. And any of you who know Barb know that's the truth in spades. And then lastly, John Malecki. John, also a social studies teacher. He also started out as a long-term substitute in our school district in 2005, 2006 school year. He joined us as a regular full-time employee back in a year later, a 607 school year. He's taken on a number of leadership roles on committees and as the junior class advisor at one point. He also sent, spent time as assistant girls soccer coach, the freshman and JV boys soccer coach as well. He was a team leader in the high school, as well as was the mock trial advisor. All of these people giving both in and out of the classroom, and we want to congratulate them and wish them only the very best as they prepare for retirement. We'll have a little party, won't we, Sarah? Probably in May or June to celebrate them and their families. But please join me in thanking them for their honorable service to our community.
Motion to approve personal transactions?
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Rod to approve personal transactions. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to five, consent agenda. Is there anything anybody would like to pull out?
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jim to approve the consent agenda. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to six discussion items. We will start with our committee member reports, and that will be, it looks like, just education committee. Carly?
So we met at the beginning of the month, on the 3rd, and it was a little bit of a shorter meeting, so we were trying to get through some things that had gotten pushed once or twice. One of them being a policy update that we'll talk about a little bit later around promotion and retention. Other than that, we went through standing updates for curriculum. Sarah gave us updates on various things that is going on right now, recruiting staff for summer school, soliciting for business in our backyard, there's state testing going on. And then we spent a little more time going over some of the K-2 Foundation Literacy Resource Review, the process and materials that those educators are using to review our curriculum materials and evaluate new ones. In equity updates, we talked a little bit more about the December 12th, the DEI night, and I think we've talked about that here in this group as well. But Sarah mentioned that the team had reviewed feedback from the night and found some common themes around the things that came up more than once, parent involvement, family involvement in incidents, restorative practices. There were lots of parents who were thankful and expressed gratitude for the work that the district is doing in this area. And I think that is about it. I think you'll see in some of these other materials, some of the other things that we looked at.
Thank you. Board members, questions for Carly? All right, moving on to six B, information advocacy report, opportunities for progress based grouping and advanced learning and professional development plan. Sarah, you want to come down and join us?
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm going to be presenting two different areas. Some goals for our time, though. We're going to meet Sita Powell. Sita Powell is our new advanced learning coordinator. She took the place of Christine Parmley, who went back to the classroom in fourth grade this year. So Sita is unable to join us tonight or even the next board meeting. So she made a video up and we're showing you guys. You can meet her, and she's going to walk through her presentation that way. And then also, so that's the first half, looking at advanced learning. The second half, then, is an update on our professional development. And I'm actually going to be asking you all a question that you're going to hopefully write down on the computer for me when we're done.
Can I go back to the question just a minute?
Of course.
So if you would, please identify one area, as we get to the professional development section, that you would like just a few more updates on. Could it be a couple different ones? Sarah, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on. All right. Sound good? Yep. Okay. So that's sort of like your exit ticket. You have to, you can't leave this room until you tell me what's something you look more interested to learn more about. Sound good? Updates throughout the year. Okay. That being said, so as I mentioned, how we have two objectives to this board report. The first one, looking at graduating lifelong learners and looking to increase and just know more about those students who we want to see move further on in education, whether it's increased testing at the state level or other opportunities available in our school district. So as I said, Christine Parmley was our previous advanced learning coordinator, and now we have new leadership, Sita Powell. And Sita made us this short video up in the front portion of the presentation. Just click on the actual, in PDF mode. There we go. Let it load. And there we go.
Hello, my name is Sita Powell, and I am the advanced learning coordinator here in Mount Horv. I am super excited to have this job. I have really enjoyed the challenge that has offered me to learn new things as someone who's in their 40s. Learning new things is a challenge, and it's wonderful. I am super lucky that I work with Christine Parmley, who had the job before me. She has done a wonderful job of creating an outline for me on what I'm supposed to do and also being super supportive in answering any of my questions. My time at Mount Horv has been super positive, and I'm excited to continue on this journey. One aspect of my job are curriculum connections. And so what happens is that it is my job to support classroom teachers and the advanced learners in those classrooms. So if a teacher comes to me and tells me that they need more challenge work for a student who perhaps passed the screener at the beginning of a unit, or a student who is too advanced for the reading that they're currently doing, I am able to offer different opportunities for that student, even though I'm not always able to pull them out into a separate group. What's awesome is that I was able to purchase the Beast Academy curriculum this year, and so that curriculum aligns to the standards and has challenge opportunities for every standard that there is. So if a teacher is teaching how to add and subtract with borrowing and carrying, and then some of my advanced learners already know how to do that. It has challenges and puzzles and activities for them to do that's within that realm of adding and subtracting multi-digit numbers, but it is more of a challenge than what's happening in classrooms. So anytime a teacher is needing support, I am able to offer it to them, and I really appreciate having that research of Beast Academy. Another thing that I do is, which is great, is that I offer, I'm part of the Greater Dane Advanced Learning Network, and I, two of the things that that network offers is a contest. The contest is open to all students, which is just fantastic. The Greater Dane Anthology Project is a writing and art contest, and so I presented to every classroom in fifth through eighth grade, every literacy classroom in fifth through eighth grade, to all of the students and made sure that they were aware of this opportunity. It's great for kids who maybe didn't get screened as advanced learners but are super good at art or super good at writing poetry. Another thing that is open to all students in fourth grade, in Dade County actually, is a haiku contest. And so one way that I was able to present that is I went into some fourth grade classrooms and actually taught a haiku lesson in order to support the teachers and be, you know, a connection to their current curriculum. Both of those were wonderful opportunities for any student who is interested to participate in advanced learning opportunities. I also offer new learning challenges for students who are considered Tier 3 and are put into pull-up groups. I do both literacy and math groups in the PC for second grade and all through the IC. This has been one of my most dejoyous experiences at Mount Horv, is getting to work with the students and challenging them and finding ways to engage them and give them opportunities to struggle and problem solve and enjoy each other's company and be part of a learning community where we, where we're always trying to grow and strengthen our skills, but know that we don't have to be perfect and that it's okay to not know the answer right away. Again, I would say that Beast Academy has been super helpful in this experience. They have puzzle books, and my kids absolutely love the puzzles. In fact, I brought a puzzle for you guys to try to see how, even though we know how to add and subtract, there are ways to go more in-depth with our editing.
Okay.
All right.
So it's easy. I promise. Okay. You do as many as you want. Let's do one. Okay, so the X outs. You have puzzle grids in front of you.
Jim, this is for you.
Puzzle grids in front of you. You're going to horizontally try to get to that sum by crossing out one number. Again, younger kids do this. This is going real fast for adults, you all, I'm sure, are math whizzes. So for example, you have 6, 9, 2, and 6. What would, number would you cross out to get 14? And you go the next row, so on and so forth.
I'm going to roll.
I know.
This isn't exactly math.
We can make this competition, too, if you want, like, first one down gets a prize. Scooby token or something?
Say ice cream.
11. 3. 13.
Stop talking aloud. We have to.
20.
So you get the idea. You're more than welcome, continue us throughout your full board meeting, if you'd like.
That's really cute.
Do we need to share answers, or you guys think you're okay without sharing the answers?
I think we should have a competition, as long as I can. I don't know.
Okay. See, so again, adding, having students think about which one doesn't belong, just a different conceptual way to, for advanced learners, to think about a simple concept as such as adding. Okay, we'll continue.
For our students, I also have a little picture of what my fifth grade, one of my fifth grade math groups that brings a smile to my face every time I go to them. Let me show it one more time. Firstly, I have two clubs that I sponsor in the middle school and actually one in the IC as well. So there is future problem solving, which is a middle school only club, and we solve problems throughout the, like, starting in the fall, and we're working on our third problem now. And then after our third problem, we enter it into like a greater contest, and then we have a competition in Green Lake. Also, there is a Math 24 contest, and so I have a little Math 24 square for you. I have a fourth grade, fifth grade group, and also a middle school group, and we practice weekly, and there is a competition in March. And so what will?
Pause it there.
Got really excited, yeah. Yeah, pause it there. So with Math 24, I know some of our kids have been in Math 24 before. So you have four numbers here. You have to use all four numbers, you can add, subtract, multiply, or divide to get to 24.
I have the answer on my screen, it's like...
Don't turn it. Don't look ahead. You're eliminated.
It's not even looking ahead.
You're eliminated.
It's just looking up on the PDF.
Are you cheating again?
Anyone else look at the PDF?
Oh, it is.
No, it's okay. I knew it was going to be there. I just didn't think they'd do that, like, you guys are on it tonight.
They always are.
Okay.
Anyone not looking at it? Rod's busy doing the cross-out, so he doesn't have it up on his screen. So he should have to do math now.
Rod, would you like to try and answer the Math 24 problem?
Oh, sure, sure.
Use all four numbers. You can add, subtract, multiply, divide.
I'll cover it up so you can't see the answer on my screen.
I didn't hear the direction.
Would you like to popcorn pass it?
I don't even know what that means, but probably not.
You have to use all four numbers to come up with three math problems.
All four, three? Okay.
Wait, aren't you supposed to just come up with 24?
Three or one?
Yeah, 24. You have to just come up with 24, using all four numbers.
12. She just walked you through that on that slide.
15 plus 9. That's one.
We'll keep the show rolling here.
I'm going to keep on.
Yep.
We had summer school for the rest of us.
This is the fourth grade square. It's like the easiest square. You have to take the four numbers and make 24 using adding, subtracting, multiplying, dividing. So what I did, or what one of the students did, was they did 5 times 5. They got 25. And then they took 25, subtracted 4, which got them to 21. And then they added 3, which got them to 24. And so that's kind of what we do in our practice. We just go through the cards, and in middle school, it's way harder. They have, you know, they have to do fractions and things like that. I really appreciate you taking time to hear about some of the activities that I work on in Mount Horv and just hearing about my job. I really enjoy it, and I'm having so much fun learning new things right along with the students.
She's a delight.
Yeah. She, Sita has been able just to step right in, and granted, it's a learning curve. This was a new position for her. She came to us from Mass and Metropolitan School District as a classroom teacher, elementary classroom teacher, but her heart has always been in advanced learning. When we interviewed her back in the spring, summer-ish, it was, it was the right fit. She's doing a great job, so. You get to meet Sita, maybe you'll get to meet her in person someday, too, but we wanted to introduce you to that new face. Any questions for the advanced learning piece?
I did have one question.
Sure.
So she mentioned that Beast Academy, in the beginning, she said that the Beast Academy allows them to work within the standards. Can the kids advance so that they can progress if they've already kind of learned it all and they're ready to move on to another type of thing that maybe isn't a second grade thing?
Yeah.
Maybe it's a third grade thing?
Yeah.
Can they do that as well?
I don't know how much she's flexing her groups yet with this resource. So I don't know what grade level, this would be four in front of you guys, I'm thinking probably tomorrow, second grade-ish. But when I visited a couple of times during her fifth grade group, those kids are working hard on that concept, but it's just that much higher in the thinking level. So I can ask her if she's been flexing grade level groups. If we do flex kids, we have a small number of kids who maybe advance math, and they go to a higher grade level for math. But with the advanced math that she does during camp or wind time, I haven't, she hasn't shared, I don't believe there's a need to really move kids further in that Beast Academy piece yet. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, so if they are advanced, then they, then they could be in, go to the next grade or whatever.
We have a couple based on, based on our criteria, yeah.
Gotcha. So our, our student who came last time was doing the math of the grade above where he was at.
Yeah, in middle school, we have advanced.
Yeah.
We have criteria for content level advancement, such as math.
Yeah, like it's math, they don't even call it like sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math, isn't it math one and two and three, and then?
And algebra.
And then algebra.
Some of the higher school geometry.
Yeah.
Yep.
So a little different in middle school. I was thinking more like the younger grades.
Elementary.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's more during the camp or wind time, that intervention time, where we meet kids where they're at, where she works with students, and that in the Beast piece, and that's when they have this enrichment on the standard that's being done in that lesson.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So Sarah, what's her resources? What, what is her capacity? You know, is it just, is there a certain percentage of students of, you know, advanced learners, or is it just, you know, this math class in second grade has X many, and we take, we take all of them, or, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, she, I worked through that, actually, last week. She reached out with that question. You know, we have one advanced learning coordinator, K-12, but the main part of the time is really devoted to 3-8. She does go over the primary center to help during the camp time there. So she is, we are, we have able to stretch that further on the edges, but we really do stop at that eight, because high school then students can take various courses for the advanced piece. It's a lot. It is a lot. Within the report itself, we did list numbers for specific, I think, of each two and three. As we go through some of the programs that are offered, the specific number of kids listed are there. We really tried to base it on criteria. So typically, students at the 97th percentile in a math or district level assessment statute then start to go into, into different advanced learning opportunities. So I think if we scroll down a little bit more, Dr. Slarno, so like Beast Academy, she gives the numbers, like, sending to students for that, enrichment groups, and she throws some numbers here and there. So it's a good amount of students sometimes, but, you know, with their half-hour chunks throughout her day, she's able to reach a lot of students. But it's quite the juggling act, I'm not, I'm not going to lie on that, and she has to span between the PC, the IC, and the middle school as well. We have talked about in the past, do we need another person? Yes. That was one of, I think, the questions we tested on our referendum survey, and we had that third tier, and that having another coordinator position was on that third tier with almost some other positions. It didn't test well in the survey, it still doesn't mean we don't need it. Good question. I think, Ethan, you had a question?
Yeah, I was going to ask. I know when I was in fifth grade, there was like sections of, this is my math class, where I would like test out of the curriculum. Are the kids that are in the advanced programs still taking their normal math time, or are they moving out of those, like math doesn't need hours to go work with?
Yeah. Yeah, so when you, when you had math, it was, it was everyday math, and there were the pre-unit tests that you have ahead of time to see where you were at. But I think you probably didn't have, within your math programming, like, the walls open and teachers really sharing kids and grouping kids more as much?
Kind of dependively, yeah.
Yeah. So we are doing that more now, that two or three classroom teachers share kids to meet them where they're at. So that's been helpful, too.
Sarah, I think, just one more broad question, too.
Please.
You talked about, like, what could you do with more staff?
Yeah.
Is there anything else that you'd have in mind with more resources if it were thrown at this?
Um, one piece that we keep our eye on with the budget is when we offer, they used to be called WikiD classes, they're online learning classes. We do keep it to, a student who would qualify is only able to take one quarter of that online learning class versus multiple throughout the year, just due to where our budget is. We've kept the advanced learning budget relatively stable throughout my time here. We increased it once, but again, we have a budget of $1 million previously. So we've just been very thoughtful with how I've been moving money around to make sure kids have opportunities, so. Still going at it, Mr. Heiss?
Pardon me?
Still going at it?
Oh, yeah.
Why are you so focused?
My mother would be very proud of me.
So we've just been very thoughtful with how I've been moving money around to make sure kids have opportunities, so. Still going at it, Mr. Heiss?
Pardon me?
Still going at it?
Oh yeah.
Why are you so focused?
My mother would be very proud of me.
He would like a sticker when he's done.
I had the answer, she didn't need it.
But stickers, that's what he wants.
Okay, I'll figure that out. Okay. That's all I have for this piece. May I move on to the second half? Awesome, thank you. So professional development, back in August, we typically give you a preview of the professional development and then go into further detail how's it going throughout the year around that. So I know usually we like to stick to three talking points, so sorry, I put five down. I'll try to go through these as quickly as possible, you know, we're busy tonight. So instructional coaching has been going on in our school district for... No, you want to keep that?
Oh, sorry.
It's okay, sorry.
Excuse me, I thought you were asking.
No. Instructional coaching is, is new for our school district. We had our instruct, three instructional coaches, Julie Jones, on the left to right, Julie Jones and Amanda Seija and Stacy Meister. This is their first year in these roles in our school district. So on this slide, I divided what coaching looks like for them as instructional coaches. And on the right side, by them what they do. So in order to set them up for success, we, we have front loaded their learning, invested time, invested staffing, and invested financial resources to make sure that they not only had summer training, but now have monthly coaching support where consultants from CISA 2 come in for full days monthly and work with them on coaching, modeling for them, and then watching them and giving them feedback as well. That's the best type of professional development you can have, right? Job embedded coaching. So we want to make sure we're modeling and practicing what we're preaching with them. And on the right side then, just some examples of what coaching looks like for them. Whether they're team teaching or modeling a lesson, connecting teachers like, hey, I saw this in this classroom, maybe you want to watch this as well. A great quote by Stacy Meister, "Coaching is about what's next, not about what's wrong." We all can get to something next and improve upon something. And that's our coaches' mindsets as they walk into classrooms to work with teachers. Co-teaching has also been occurring. We have on our journey, what, five years now, Brian, six years co-teaching, you could probably say? And we still want to make sure those teams are supported in that process. Where we have one or two regular ed classroom teachers working with a special education teacher in an inclusive setting. So we have our co-teaching teams, you can see here, I'm not gonna name all names right now. But you can see this group that we have at the elementary who are working with Latricia Johnson. She's in the middle. She's our CISA 2 person who comes in monthly for two day stints. The first day she'll observe, do visits. And then the second day she'll meet with each team, debrief, and talk about what's next, where they can go. So again, job embedded coaching, we're trying to do things right and investing in these teams as they move forward. And it's not just a one and done year. This is Latricia's second year, maybe, and we're ready to talk about dates for next year because teams can continue to improve. Teacher clarity is also an area that we've been talking about, K-12. Clarity in what we do within our classrooms. It's not just what students are doing, it's what they're learning, why they're learning it, and how they know they've learned it. So I presented these questions to our leadership teams and then to our grade, some of our grade level teams. If you were to walk into a classroom, which some of you do, right? And you visit our classrooms, and you would ask students these four questions, what percentage of students would get it right? I'll show you the answers a little bit based on the study, but I'm gonna ask you all first. So if you would walk into a classroom and ask a student, what, what are you doing? Ask students, what are you doing? What percentage of students would be spot on in their answers? Any guesses?
Depends on the grade level.
Okay. Let's just, I, I don't know. I, I hope kids can say what they're doing.
Well, and how much they want to engage, right? So.
Let's just say they have to answer the question.
Okay, they have.
Okay.
Eighty percent.
Eighty percent?
Ninety-three percent.
Ninety-three.
Right.
Come on, guys!
Stop looking at the answers.
Cheaters. Okay, just forget it. Keep moving. Go forget it.
Get this out of here.
Just go, just go.
Oh, look at there.
Wow, look at that. Keep going.
Wow.
It's impressive, that's a form of communication.
Okay, well, now let's use higher brain thinking here. Okay, application now. Thoughts, what do you, what, what do you notice? What are you thinking based on the percentages you now see? That you didn't have to think about, that you were fed these. So what are some observations?
Do we, I, I'm, well, I'm far less concerned about kids being able to articulate what they're learning than I am about what they're, they're, they're doing. I mean, you, you just go back, you go back, you go to athletics and you, and you drill teams on stuff and they may have no idea what they're being drilled on. They're, they're doing, they're doing it, but they, they may have no idea what they're, what they're being drilled on. In fact, I have a 20-year-old in my house who told me two weeks ago that he now understands why we drilled him in hockey practice for 11 years on this one, one particular thing. So I'm far less concerned about, about that. That was a long, that was a long answer. But it was, it was a good one. It really was a good, particularly now that I've completed my, uh...
I would say the deeper you go in the questions, the less that they're able to answer it.
Correct.
And, which is kind of concerning because what you'd like them to understand is the real life application of what they're learning and how they're gonna use it going forward. Because that kind of cements the principles in your brain.
Not just memorization.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, think about your jobs, your occupations, your passions. You probably wouldn't want to know if you're being evaluated or assessed, what you're being assessed on, right? And only 4% of students in this study could articulate, okay, if I'm learning it and I'm successful in it, well, what does that look like? So these are the kind of pieces we want to have upfront with students. Be as explicit as possible in that, as direct in that, okay? You're learning this because, and this is what it's gonna look like to be successful. We all want that in whatever we do. It shouldn't be a mystery. So that's in essence what, what we talk about with teacher clarity. It's very simple, concise. What students should know, why they should know it, and then how they're gonna be assessed or how, what the success look like.
And those questions align with what we're doing in the professional learning community too, right? We have these kinds of conversations about these four questions often times.
So, so how important are these? I mean, I'm not being, I'm not being, I'm not bad mouthing it, I'm just under, I mean, I just there, I look at this and I go, I don't, I mean, it's like, it's, it's just like the old adage that comes to mind, Adam will appreciate this maybe, is you become a better writer by, by, by being a better reader. And so, okay, so if I'm reading a book, I, I know that, I mean, or something, or I may not know that something, something's going on in another part of my, my knowledge. But I, I don't, I mean, are we concerned that, that, about any of these numbers? I mean, what, what, what is it, what, I mean, is this a symptom of, of something that we're concerned about or what? I don't know. I guess I'm, I have my hard, a hard time getting my arms around.
It's how clear we are with what students are learning. Research by John Hattie really looks at what are the high impactful strategies, pieces that really push the needle on student learning? And teacher clarity has, is one of like the top 10%. If we have a long list, the 253 he has, like in the top 10%, teacher clarity is one of those pieces that is a simple-ish thing to do. Because we should be very clear as to where we're going with our learning for kids and they should know where it's going. That it moves the needle on, on that with student learning, but that also impacts some of the pieces as well. So research, you know, I know you're like to ground things in research, Rod. The research shows that when these things, the students are able to do these things or articulate these things and be in the know, it improves their learning over time.
So Sarah, are we, in like, in our courses then, are we providing our teachers with this understanding? Because that could be interpreted a lot in different ways probably. And then I'm just trying to think of like the universality of lessons.
Yep.
That a lot of things might be hard to apply to a kid who's only interested in X or has this as a career, doesn't see the connection. And that's thinking like higher grade levels too, but.
The why's sometimes tough, especially when you get to like advanced physics or Calc BC or Calc AB. But the why really provides that ownership piece. If you all know why you're doing something, you're not questioning as much and you're more engaged. With the learning piece for staff, right now it's still a learning curve and it's a new language in our school district. Making sure that the learning goals and the success criteria are available for staff at the beginning of lessons on the PowerPoints. Like kids know what, what we're doing and why we're doing it. Sometimes it is nice in a lesson to have the mystery of why you're doing it. But by the time you get to that point, it's explicitly like, this is what we're doing, this is why we're doing it, and this is how you're gonna be successful. And that's just a piece we want to make sure is embedded within our units and our lessons. Whether it's first graders knowing why they're learning this, all the way up to 12th graders. So if you want to learn more about this, you can write this down in your post-it note, for example. Like you'll be more information, but this is your first glimpse of that work because it will continue throughout the years.
Diana just picked a pen, very slowly.
So what is that really doing? So I'm gonna offer an example, this'll provide a little more context. So everything's grounded in the standards, right? In July, the Board of Ed approves the standards for each school year. So you all know them so well, you've read them all. So, and then from there, staff members think about, okay, haha, what are cool activities I can do? But we want to reframe it. What do you want students to learn from those standards? What are the specific learning intentions? And then from there, okay, so students, I want students to learn X, Y, and Z. How are they gonna show me that they've gotten it? That's how we sort of want to think about it as we plan the lessons. Now we start planning what we're gonna be doing. It's that backwards design. So I have some examples on the next slide, which I'm sure you all read already because you read, you're up to date on your slides. So, so for example, a standard has to do with writing. Writing an opinion piece, sharing a point of view, stating the opinion and giving the reasons. That's a standard. Okay, so staff member says, okay, well, in my weekly lessons or in my unit, we're, we're gonna look and think about how to write an opinion piece to persuade an audience. That's gonna be our learning intention for this unit. Okay, the kids are like, okay, that's what we're doing. So on day two, let's say we're working on examples. By the time we're done today, everybody, you're gonna be able to walk away or you're gonna have examples. You're gonna be able to figure out, to show how to support an opinion with examples. Okay, that's what success is gonna look like today. It's as simple as that. But we want to make sure that that kind of language and that kind of direct conciseness, that explicit language, those directions are for students to know exactly what they're doing it and how they're gonna be successful. Simple.
But can I ask a question? So like success criteria, couldn't that look a little differently in, say, high school? Like success criteria, isn't there typically a rubric? So you're, 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 you're doing this, you know, paragraph or essay or whatever. You've got these, you know, different examples and then this is the rubric. This is what?
Correct.
That's how you get an A, essentially. But also how you learn based on students.
Yep, yep. So it could be that as well. And it, so for examples, you can look into that next slide. It could be students in a third grade classroom, so the upper left, in a math class at the end of the lesson. The teacher wanted to know, okay, whatever this learning target was, it was adding something, I think. How many students felt like they hit it in the bullseye? Or you still need some more work and some more help? So that's one way a student, sorry, the teacher can assess if the students were successful. So as you guys are doing, an exit ticket, there's exit tickets as well to show, okay, we're working on two-digit addition and this strategy of break aparts. To be successful today, you're gonna show me how to do that. So they'll learn the lesson, they'll do the practice, they'll work in pairs. By the time the lesson's done, they're gonna show if they're successful or not by filling out the exit ticket to show what they know. What you're talking about Diana, again, this is a lower level, but a rubric, right? Or a checklist of, okay, this is what I need to do in order to be successful. This would be an example of success criteria for a whole paper or a whole essay. But maybe each day is the broken part piece, what success looks like. And rubrics become more complex as the kids get older in high school. Yep.
Do you think the, the success criteria is potentially discouraging younger kids? Maybe if they're not understanding the concept exactly, do you think they could be frustrated by that potentially? Or like just discouraged by how the teacher's saying this is what you have to do to understand it and if they're not getting it? Or viewing it more as a way to like kind of recognize who's struggling in class, who needs extra help from the teachers?
The second part, yes. Whether the, the success criteria is stated or not, say that students still gonna feel frustration. But now they know where they need to go and the language is there to say, I can do this or can't do this, right? Good question. So that's just a very brief, easy part and hard part of the ball this report is to like educate you all at once about everything, but then keep it brief, solve and keep moving. So another area that we've been doing a lot of work on is K-5 literacy. We've had a great math journey over time in the past three years or so with our learning and switching over programming and resources. Now we're starting that journey with K-5 literacy. So we've had two book studies with our district literacy committee over the summer. And a group of 20 of us, which includes Brian and I and some of our, all of our kindergarten teachers, our K-3 specialist teachers, our, all of our reading specialists, our EL teacher have been doing something called letters training. I think I put in the board report, it's been like, it's a total like 80 hours. So it's pretty much a college class, all these professionals are doing right now on top of their, their teaching. But to really dig deep into foundational literacy instruction and what kids need. So that's been a great journey for all of us. Because that'll help us to inform as we move forward to resources where we want to go. I just wanted to provide you, probably heard, maybe not, language about the science of reading. That's where a lot of this work and our learning is centered on. The, again, explicit, direct teaching of phonics and phoneme awareness and all of the, all the pieces on the SCARs, but we rope, just a visual. We can get more into this as time goes on as well. Oh, okay. Equity work has also been a piece that we have been moving forward with in our school district. I think this year has been one of prior better years of having a scope and sequence and really following through on where we wanted to go this year. Again, this stems from our Board of Ed anti-racism equity statement. Specifically the fourth, the fourth item or fourth bullet about professional development for all staff. About the items listed there. So on that journey this year, we have had five, four, five opportunities or touchpoints to educate staff or our community. So in October, we had a presenter, she did a virtual piece, Deanna Singh. She's a self-described flying elephant in Milwaukee area, national speaker, national writer. But just talking about how are, how are your own identity bubbles? Whether your gender, sexual orientation, professional status, race, ethnicity really influences who you are. And you have your own perceptions and bias potentially based on your own identity. Now, how do we burst those bubbles and make connections with others to understand other peoples? In November, then we started to hit more about explicit and implicit bias, examining that. We did some activities, maybe we'll do an activity with you guys someday, about how to identify and how do you feel about when you are held biased or when you have discrimination against you? We started talking about strategies for that. Then in December, which we've talked about off and on, I know Carly's Education Committee report alluded to some learnings from our community learning night, some of you were there as well, about how we handle responses to discriminatory actions, behaviors, and language. We got feedback from the community and from parents on that and how we handle those. Actually, today then in January, Martin Luther King Day, we had Percy Brown, who is the Director of Curriculum, sorry, Director of Equity in Milton Area School District and statewide speaker on the issues at hand with when we think about race and diversity equity. He came in for our first part of a two-parter today, reflecting on hate speech. Celebrating the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. But then how do we apply that to now and how do we handle hate speech within our community, within our schools? So Percy gathered a lot of information through a SWOT analysis. We had probably 25, 30 poster charts that we're gonna start to look for themes of what's happening in our buildings with students. And he's gonna use that information in February then to tailor a history of hate speech and end word education piece for us. And then talk through what are some strategies and the things that we can start informing the staff to address these. So that's our progression and I'm building upon our equity work this year so far. I'm switching gears again on you, so sorry. But hopefully you're jotting down what you want to learn more about in the future time. That's your exit ticket. That's your success criteria today. Okay, so mentoring program.
There's so much pressure.
Mentoring program. We have over time been increasing our pool of certified mentors per DPI, state statute. New teachers, like brand new teachers in the profession, their first three years, they need to have a certified mentor. So that is a lot of people wanting to fill that role. So throughout the past four years, we've been building up our mentor pool. It's a two-year commitment to learn to be a mentor, to go through the coursework. So you can see the professionals and you recognize some faces who are going through that or have gone through that. Great group, a lot of extra time on their, their part to go through the training on top of that weekly mentoring sessions. So within the board report and then on the next slide, I have just Melissa Olmstead, who I got, I received a quote from her and then Kelly Parker is also with us. and then Kelly Parker is also in the board report. But just about what mentoring has meant to these professionals and how they've grown. It's offered Melissa time to reflect on her own practice and improve her own practice because she's thinking about from a mentoring lens, but also in her conversations with her mentee. What's also been nice is her mentors or, sorry, her mentees observe her and she also observes them each month. So it's been nice to have those multiple opportunities and touchpoints, which has been really great as well. I think that might be it because my voice is locked in. Is that it? Okay, so you have five different areas. We also are doing many other things, but these are sort of the main pieces that we continue on each year. Just going to do an update of our bigger X in the PD world. So where comes the point where we have our five pieces, our five pieces that, is there one that you would like to learn more about? Oftentimes, those in education committee get to learn more about these and it's not the full board. So I want to make sure I can bring some pieces back to the full board here and there to provide more learning for you all. So you're in the know.
So it means you want like my.
I don't want your name. Nope. So you just tell by the writing? No, I'm just kidding.
I tried really hard to write legibly.
It's okay, take this.
Oh, yes.
You want two-sided, right? Good job. Gold star, we'll find one.
So while you're doing that, Sarah.
Yeah.
I want to encourage you based on this, the survey information that we saw, the 12,000 and all that kind of nonsense. Despite the fact that research is good, never be afraid to keep it simple. And all you got to, if you're using research, and I know you know this, but I'm going to say it anyway. If you're using research, it can, it can complicate things. And it may be, it may be a good use of time and resources and things like that. But again, just never, as you're doing it, you have to say to yourself, how can I keep this? As important as this is, as productive as this is going to be, how can I keep it simple? Right?
Perfect. Thank you for your time. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you very much. It was very illuminating. Really appreciated it, Sarah.
Thanks.
Thanks, Sina, for us as well.
Yeah, definitely, we'll do.
Did you write all of them? Adam, Renoff.
No.
Guys, appreciate the feedback. You all can be.
Yay, we're done. Okay, moving on to seven action items. Seven A is consideration of open enrollment availability for 2023, 2024 school year. Brian, you're up.
So every year in January, we look at space that's available for general education students and also students with disabilities. And those are space that's available for the staffing that we have and the classroom space that you guys approved. We take the maximum number of students and then we minus it one and then subtract five for move-ins. So we're not at the exact maximum capacity for every classroom. And that's how we set our regular education numbers. Our special education numbers are based on space and the staffing that we have available. And hopefully you'll approve it tonight. What this also means for the community and surrounding communities, of course, is that once these numbers are approved, then open enrollment exception window does end because we do have limits on space until the end of the school year. So there'll be no more enrollment to. For open enrollment. They can move here. Of course.
Questions, board members?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion? Hearing none? Oh, sorry.
Real quick, Brian, how is this changed if we do have people move in? That might need some extra assistance? And then, you know, do we go back to the drawing board in the summer with the upcoming school year?
Yeah, so once we pick our numbers, then we cannot change these numbers from here on out. That's why we do give the wiggle room of minus one of our maximum and then minus the five for the move-ins. Special education numbers are pretty much, like we just know we can't take more in a certain grade or some of the services are, we contract out. And so for those students, we don't have to allow any additional services in.
Perfect, thank you.
Your point's a really good one, Jim, because we had that problem happen in our third grade this summer. We had a large number of people who just happened to move in, which impacted our teacher pupil ratio. And thankfully, the board had set limits because we weren't able to accommodate everybody who wanted in, who had not moved into the district. Thanks for asking that question.
Okay, motion by Rod, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. All right. Seven B, consider alterations to policy 345.4, K-3 promotion and retention.
I have to take my drink, sorry.
That's right.
As we know, board policies are being reviewed for our WASB review. Within the WASB review, a couple of pieces were pointed out. Actually, I probably should step back one step. Per state statute, in our current policy structure, we have a policy about promotion for K-2 students and then we had a grades from fourth to fifth and then we had it from eighth to ninth. Because per state statute, those are the three levels that are specifically identified. So we could keep those policies the way they are. But within our WASB review, they pointed out some pieces that we had to change, that we had to make with different assessments, with the state assessments changing. But also, it made us think about, you know, the questions of, okay, we have these promotion criteria for the state mandated pieces. We probably should also expand that criteria for the other grade levels as well. So in that sense, I was thinking, well, why not have one policy where we have the promotion criteria for all the grade levels instead of just those three specific jumps? So what you have before you assert a new policy, you probably have the red line in there, but the red line, red line is like, I don't know if I hear red line, it's all new and combine all the policies. So this one might be some changes we made at our education committee, Steve, a couple of times.
Oh, sure.
But it's a completely new policy that combining aspects of the other three policies into one. And then we also added the acceleration piece that was not in our policy, but how students accelerate. So I wanted to make sure we had promotion, retention, and acceleration in one policy spanning all grade levels. So that's sort of the big piece. So before you, you'll have this policy and then the next two agenda items on your action items are then to remove the two policies then that were no longer needed because everything's in one policy now. So that's a quick why. Other than that, anything else notable? I would say no.
Motion approved, item seven B. I'll second that.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jim. Further discussion?
One quick question, just to get an idea on how many kids, you know, fall into that retention acceleration.
As a district, we don't believe in retention.
Yeah.
And most districts don't believe in retention. I would say research has shown, I shouldn't say that. Studies.
Please do say that. Tell me the research.
Research and life has shown retaining, in many cases, retaining students don't benefit the students. We have interventions, camps, things in place to help the students. Sometimes, you know, when we're talking about itty-bitty and parents want to retain a student or a teacher may say that, we have to think about, okay, so how are we going to change what we're doing? Because a student didn't learn the first time, holding them back doesn't mean it's going to happen the next time. How that affects them when they're a senior and they're 19, 20-year-old senior, right? So there's, you have to think long range and look at the research as to why you would not retain. There's some instances, summer birthdays, weird things I hear in there. A newcomer student to the state, there's a lot of different pieces we look at. But it's our policy and our goal not to retain students, is to do things differently or keep them with their age level peers.
So we have a motion for approval from Rod, seconded by Jim. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, sorry, you're right. I thought of that before we got into the conversation and then. All right, so this will be a roll call since it's a first reading. Jessica.
Yes.
Rod.
Aye.
Leah.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Carly.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
And I'm also yes. Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to seven C, consider removal of policy 345.41, promotion from fourth grade to fifth grade.
Can we combine, Sandy?
Yes.
Yes.
So I make a motion that we remove policy 345.41 and 345.42.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Leah. He pointed you first, so. Further discussion? Also a roll call. It doesn't say a first reading, so. Also a roll call. Jessica.
Yes.
Rod.
Aye.
Leah.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Carly.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
And I'm also yes. Motion to remove 345.41 and 345.42 carries. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
All right, moving on to eight, citizens' comments. Okay, moving on to nine, future agenda items are listed. As always, if you have any ideas to add to the list, please let us know. We'll get them on there. Moving on to 10, scheduled next meeting, Dr. Slade, to note.
No.
And we'll move on to 11, closed session, contemplated closed session, per Wisconsin statutes, to consider employment compensation and performance evaluation data of any public employer over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. And this is regarding MHE negotiations and superintendent's evaluation. This will be a roll call vote. First I need.
Thinking of a motion.
I need a motion first. Sorry.
So moved.
Thanks, Leah.
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Rod. Further discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote. Jessica.
Yes.
Rod.
Aye.
Leah.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Carly.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
And I'm also yes. We'll take five minutes.